I'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Ms. Lanier's approval of the minutes for 2000, December 20, 2018, and then we have two continued public hearings, 705 and 715, Ellsworth Road and 23, 33 Ellsworth Road and 23 Ellsworth Road, and Marion Lane, and then the government. And Kevin, we were here to give all the testimony.
I was.
At the last meeting.
I was.
I'm going to point you to take Bob Cluell's place tonight. Okay, go ahead and try to read the minutes. Any additions or corrections?
No.
All right, here's a motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion, we're accepting the most.
Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Motion's made seconded, all in favor, the signature by the same guy.
All right.
Motion is accepted, passed. Okay. Case number 1905, 33 Ellsworth Road and 23, 33 Ellsworth Road and 23 Ellsworth Road. We got a letter from the fire department, which we requested for our last meeting. And this is continuation of our meeting, which we, we asked to continue it because we didn't have a quarrel for last month, and that's the only reason that we're here tonight, otherwise we would have taken care of this last month, but we didn't have a quarrel, so felt it was best to just ask for continuance to go to tonight. So, I'm going to read this letter we got from the fire department, and then I'll ask if there's any other information that needs to come before the board. Raleigh's only, well, Raleigh's only Board of Appeals, members of the board, this is from the fire department. "I've read the application and met with the owner of the properties mentioned, and on January 8th, 2019, I made a site visit to these properties mentioned in the application. The road in question, Ellsworth Road, currently is an unimproved road that is in fair and poor condition. The roadway in question comes off of Wilson Pond Road and runs approximately 887 feet to a wire cable gate and two poles. The roadway width is approximately 18 feet. There are four houses directly off this road and two houses off of Leslie Terrace that comes off of Ellsworth Road. This is a private road. The utilities on this road are electric telephone capable that is co-located on telephone poles. There is no municipal water in the street. The closest fire hydrant is approximately 227 feet east of Ellsworth Road on Wilson Pond Road. The fire department testified in court several years ago about the ability of this road to handle the safe passage of fire apparatus, not only during normal conditions, but also during winter and snow, could decrease the likelihood. Our position remains the same, that the road is not wide enough, the entire width for equipment to traverse, and the lack of water supply on the road for firefighting fires will make it difficult to fight fires. It is the opinion of the fire department that in the event of a fire or any other emergency on this road, that under ideal conditions, it's difficult to get emergency apparatus down this road, and that there is no clear and adequate area for the equipment to turn around there. Due to the fact that the closest fire hydrant at Ellsworth is on Wilson Pond Road, once any fire hose is put down on the street, in the event of a fire, there will be no way for any other vehicles to traverse. The installation of residential sprinkler systems, which has been done in the past at several locations in town, will have a limited supply of water due to not being on a water main, and are designed to keep the fire in check to allow the residents to escape the house. The system that would be required would most likely not be able to extinguish the fires, therefore they would not address the issues of the current road as it currently designed. The trucks will still need a load sufficient width and adequate turnaround to allow fire apparatus, especially the ladder truck, which is approximately 39 feet in length, to try to run. The current setup of the road does not allow this. If you have any questions, please contact me.
This is an FYI.
I have a letter here from John Marcos, who lives on Leslie Park.
Leslie Terrace.
Leslie Terrace. He writes, "When I bought the property last year, part of the value of the purchase was knowing that houses could not be built on, and if I thought that was going to change, it would have affected my decision, and certainly my offer price. My biggest fear is loss of value in the home due to change in the neighborhood landscaping. These proposed laws, if houses are built on them, will literally be looking into my yard. I do not believe that will bring the resale value down." I do believe that it, that will bring the sale, resale value down. Among those two parcels to be built on, will openly remain properties to be built on as well. I believe there are three or four additional lots without major development that would also be planned at the end of the road. This will increase traffic in the neighborhood. The road itself is too narrow for two cars, and is and had been maintained by the neighbors as a co-laborative effort of being a private road. There is no town effort put into it. Additionally, we do not need to be concerned about the effect on the schools, busing, plumbing, paving, fire hydrants, lighting, or policing power consumption, preservation of historical focal block and so forth. The road is not set up to handle five, six additional homes with eight to 18 additional vehicles. How will these vehicles enter and exit? Is the town going to take on the burden of these added vehicles, and they're wearing care not only of Ellsworth Road, but Wilson Pond Road and Leslie Road, which is already too narrow for existing residents and traffic that have seen it and diverted there by use of the ways?
Ways out.
Ways out. The first corner of Leslie Road from 133 is one of the most treacherous spots in town. People from outside the neighborhood fly along the corners blindly, and at night with lights in their eyes, it can be frightening, increasing traffic, only, will only increase the possibility it might revert to major collision there. I believe the ZBA should strongly consider rejecting the appeal made to build on this road. Yes, I do have a personal interest in not having those properties built upon, and that's why I stated those first. However, I moved to Raleigh from Ipsos in 2003, and have brought up three of my children, one of my girlfriends here in the school, and in the town to consider it home. I don't believe the total costs incurred by the town with these additions for this small neighborhood, and the surrounding areas and roads that would be affected is warranted, nor should the town be burdened of these costs for the benefit of the property and individual company, or compound. I hope these factors are seriously considered when the ZBA makes a decision. Taxes have already gone up as of recent, and certain departments still seem underfunded. I further endorse, we further endorse the tax revenue versus expenses of the irresponsible oversight. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments you'd ever like to make? Yes, sir.
So, again, Jay Tallerman, Mr. Chairman, I represent the applicant here, and as you may know, yesterday we requested a continuance of tonight, and it was discussed with your counsel that we come tonight and make that request in person. The reason we requested a continuance is that since the date of the last meeting, my client's been working on plans that might address the fire department's concern, and in fact, since his January 22nd letter, my client's met a couple of times with the fire chief, and he's working on plan modifications that would address some of the very things in that letter, including sprinkling, which would be done not through a water main, but through a private well, so it wouldn't be limited in capacity, cistern that would be up to the fire department's code requirements for the storage of water for fighting a fire, so a hose wouldn't have to be run from another street, further restricting the way, widening of the street, not a lot, and not paving it, but to a width of a certain safety standard that the fire chief could live with, roughly 18 feet up until the driveways, and creation on the lot of a suitable turnaround area so the fire chief could pull in and turn around. And we've worked on those plans, we're trying to finalize those. The fire chief's been very busy, and we need some, to do some follow-up with him. I'm going to give you a copy of the tentative plan that we're working with for the board's records, but we need some additional time to see if we can meet the fire department's requirements for this. I don't want to represent that he's fully satisfied with it, but we've had some very productive conversations with him, and he's spoken with my client on several occasions. This is a detailed plan of the cistern. These would be the cisterns, they could either go there or actually backed onto the property. This is the turnaround area, and this is the detailed just note on the graveling of the roadway, and the well for the property can be up in this corner that would feed the sprinklers on the, on the site as well. So, we're trying to get some details down and some technical information so that we could perhaps get a final opinion from the fire department. We're pleased to give the board whatever time it needs by way of an extension on the time period issued decision, so that we can get, get through the, the next meeting. This was done at their, at their spec, this spec that we've actually designed. He had some input into the size of the cistern. Again, I'm not going to represent that we have his okay, but we are certainly turning in the right direction with him, and that we're working on. So, until we can get a final opinion, I don't think it's fair to him or fair to you to have a final decision. We'd like to round out your evidentiary record before we ask you to make the decision.
Okay, before I act on your request, I want to know if anybody else has anything they would like to say, all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I live at 38, and it's right across from this lot, and I can't see how the road, I spoke the last time we had a meeting, and I can't see how the road can be widened without taking someone's land, and even if that's done, I, who's going to maintain that road with extra traffic? And if he's going to put two houses in, one, two houses, then the other lot's going to build, then someone else is going to come in. It's, it's ridiculous. The road needs, would need to be double wide to have passing traffic, and that's not going to happen. The town's going to take care of that. He's not going to improve the road, he's not going to pave the road, and it's never going to be wide enough to accept all these cars. So, I can't see how anybody can build, and you know what my house is, you have to turn around on my driveway.
Oh, I, I agree with him. I mean, the road is, it's already too narrow. Where are we going to put cisterns? I'm John Marcos, of Leslie Terrace. Where are these cisterns going to go? They go above ground, or underground?
Underground.
Underground, okay. I don't know if you guys have seen this land, it's a half acre lot each, separated by other half acre lot. They don't seem like the right properties for this, for this neighborhood. Number one, the, the, the road's already too narrow, number two. I know I wouldn't give me up any of my land up for it, and I'm right on that corner.
Richard Sheehan, 66 Wilson Pond Lane. In order to widen that road beyond its current 16 to 18 feet width, it's going to require removal of trees from private property owners along that road. So, I hope the counselor takes that into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we're not proposing a significant width of the right of way. We've done the title research, there's actually significant right of way to double or even triple in some areas the width of the roadway, but it's not what we're proposing. My client has a legal right to widen it and pave it the entire width under Massachusetts law, we're not proposing that either. As you know, from the last time we were here, we're really just seeking, we can deal with the other lot later with respect to this one lot, and making the necessary improvements, the minimum width possible so as to maintain the character of the roadway without widening it unnecessarily. We have the right to do more than that, anything that's within that right of way, my client has the right to improve and maintain. We're not proposing to do anything more again than to satisfy the fire department as to the minimum amount of access possible. We do have the right to have the gates removed and do more than that, we're not trying to do that right now.
I'm not sure you have that right.
No, you don't, you don't have the right to affect someone else's property along the, I mean, if you adversely affect property along the right of way, you do not have the right to do that.
Mr. Chairman, we, considering this land court decision 2018 at all from this decision being made, this was just, this was just made last year.
Okay. You, if you, you want to continue? Yeah, we do. We'd like to continue for one more session and round out evidence, and then if you guys can consider a more full record on all of this, and let the chips fall where they may end up.
Do we have to vote on this? Do we, we continue on this? So, I ask for a motion to continue the, continue the hearing for next month. So, a motion to deny, deny the continuance.
I'll make a motion to deny the continuance.
Give me a second. I'll second on the case that this is in, in court, and it was submitted unless town council has something to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. The applicant has made a request to continue this to the next hearing. I think you properly asked whether any member wishes to make a motion to do so. When there was no such motion, assuming nobody wants to make that motion, then you would continue, you would complete the hearing here tonight. There's no need for a motion to deny a continuance. I think you probably want to see whether the applicant has anything further to add, whether anybody else in the audience does, and then deliberate and vote.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is that not continuing so that you can get a full record will itself become an issue, and we would be pursuing a remand anyway to bring it back before you. We're not looking to waste anyone's time, we're looking to give you all the evidence you need to make the decision. We're not telling you what that decision should be. We've had productive conversations with the exact local official that this board will rely on, and those discussions are ongoing. That's part of the evidentiary record. That's what we'd be presenting if we had to appeal this, and we'd be compelled to appeal it. We think that you would actually benefit whether you choose to ultimately deny or approve by having a full record. Should you choose not to, then that's your prerogative, but it's, that will factor into our ultimate legal action here.
Okay, you presented us with, if this is what you're proposing to the fire department.
It's the current working draft. We expect further refinements with the fire department over the course of the next month.
Okay, well, I asked for a motion to continue this, I did not get it, so I will. And hearing no other motion, any other information, I'll, we'll close the hearing as of right We've got the letter from the fire department to what we requested, and I think it says it all. You want to discuss anything?
Well, Mr. Chairman, certainly my view, since our, our hearing of two meetings ago now, I found myself going back to absent member Cluell's point about the fact that the case is still under appeal, and our, the board's original decision was found that this was not a way, and not a road, and not buildable, and it's currently under appeal. And despite the applicant's willingness to, it appears to almost create any condition that would be acceptable to the town to expand the board, there's clearly resident opposition to it. There's questions whether or not it's in fact law that we can approve a road to be built on even on future conditions which you're not saying are even agreed to. So, I'm very hesitant to, to act on the application in any way at this point in time, subject to, you know, any information which you need to further pursue, and with the fire department or any other department in the town. And if you choose to do that, that's certainly your option, but right, right now, it would be, I think, a stretch for the board to go out on a limb in, in direct opposition to the findings of the land court and, and grant some sort of activity to occur without that being, without that, without any notion that that activity is actually going to occur. So, in, in my opinion, I think we're, we're really in a, the only place we can be, which is to not take any action on it. That's why I, that's why I didn't support the notion of a continuance.
I'll ask town council a question. I got a memo here from Debbie Egan, that stated January 2nd, and it says, "The land court affirmed the ZBA's decision and dismissed Wilson Pond's complaint." Is that correct?
That's right.
So, that case has been settled?
Well, the, the case has been resolved in the land court in the town's favor, and it has been appealed to the appeals court by the applicant.
Oh.
So, the appeal is pending.
Okay, the appeal is pending.
Right.
This is October 1. This is January 2.
Right, yeah, but we just, she just said it.
I know, but this, this dating, this event occurred at that point in time, and then they appealed it.
Okay.
Okay. Is that appeal scheduled? I'm awaiting the appellate's brief.
Can you go to the court? I was on, I was on the case that, that left the land court, and you were on it too, right? The rest of you were new. And my feeling on, on this whole situation is that it's not a good thing. So, there's been several mistakes that have been made down there regarding Ellsworth Road and New House Lane by the town and other people, and I myself am not going to make Hearing no, any further discussion? Would you like to do a gentleman?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we have any, I think our only course of action now is, as I implied, is that we, is that we move to deny the application as submitted, and settle the case right now on the grounds that it is still, is still a, in an appeal state, and our current decision- state and our current decision is still, in fact, the operating decision, the former decision is the operating decision on the case. And the board is not going to take any other action outside of this. It doesn't prevent the applicant from pursuing an appeal to this. It doesn't, doesn't prevent the applicant from pursuing any other actions further. So as residents, while you, while your points are well made, the subject is still, could still be open for debate. And frankly, it seems clear that the applicant is prepared to try to pursue almost any means available to him. Doesn't mean he'll receive it. It just means that the board is not at this point going to endorse an action for something that is, that is still in front of the land court.
Go ahead. Okay, so you made a motion to deny.
I made a motion to deny the application on that basis.
Okay. Okay, motions to deny has been made. And seconded?
Seconded.
We need, we need four, yeah, votes, right?
Yes.
Okay, no call vote. Donna?
What's the, you want to do the question?
The motion is to deny.
Sorry.
How do you vote? Yes or no?
Yes to deny.
You vote to deny. I go yes. I vote to deny.
Yes to deny.
I vote to deny.
And now, Mr. Chairman, we need to file a writ of decision of the town clerk within the statutory period.
We're in 14 days, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I had called up, uh, Mr. Kuhl's. He came, he came screaming. I had a guy talk to me physically. This guy right here. Because I was home that day. But here's what, I'm walking tomorrow. He said, he said, he said, he said, he had help with that. I'm talking to him. And we keep telling him, we want this, this, we need this. This guy needs a drink. Because when they filed, they filed on the same plan, the same, the same plan before the show.
We denied and didn't appeal the case. And they, they came back with the same plan. So we wanted to go, uh, we sat down and we went over it, saying, we told them that we were not authorities to take that same plan. And I gave them a suggestion and they said, okay, thank you guys. And they came back and the fellow that was going to buy the property backed out and they had a new fellow come in on it and he wanted to, I mean, he came back with a different move, different plan. Well, it was a substantial difference from what was filed. So we asked for the application, we asked for this, we asked for that, you know, because it was, as far as we were concerned, it was a new case. All right? He has not supplied us with that stuff. So we finally sent him this letter. And he was supposed to be here tonight. And he's not here.
How long has this been going on?
And this been going on for over a year.
This is only the second one, meaning of a change in date of meeting.
But there's no county in charge here. There's no board.
No, no, no. I'm all in trying to ask before Tom says what he thinks we can do. There's a small chance that perhaps the applicant and John, as his representative, didn't realize this all meeting. Because we've been doing this for eight years.
We also discussed this at the last one. We told him that we changed.
But this note, this letter is from January, telling him we need the documents yesterday, but we don't have one.
Is this listed on the agenda for tonight?
Yes.
It was sent to three different people.
So this is a 40B application. And he's, he's filed it and you continue the hearing to tonight and haven't noticed.
Yep, he's had many.
We've had many. He keeps saying, we, no work with the conservation, I'm doing this and so forth.
procedurally, what can we do? Can we do anything other than, I mean, can we?
I think you can open the hearing tonight because it's been put on notice and it's properly continued. It's on your agenda. Ask if he or anybody else is here on his behalf. And if not, you could say, well, we asked for information and it's been denied. So we're going to close the hearing and deliberate and vote. I'm a little concerned about the decision in this case because it's a little litigious. Do you want me to write it? Do you want to write it and send it to or review?
How about the file?
It's going to be great. And we ought to make sure that it gets filed within 100 days after the date that it was, that the application was filed.
Okay, tonight is 98 days. 98 days.
98 days. Did we get them to sign an extension before?
Last time, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And till when?
Till tonight.
Okay, we didn't ask for an extension of 100 days.
Have we had a reason? They're going to change, correct?
Okay. Yeah, we need to get this filed with the town clerk this week.
Today's Thursday. That one 90.
Today's one is only two days.
Okay, we're within 100 days for acting, but then I don't want to get into court about
whether we had to file within 100 days or whether we had another 14. There are cases going both ways on that and I'd rather not risk it. So I think we, if you don't mind, if you could do a draft, I will work on it and get it back to you and make sure, sort of so that you can file with town clerk on Friday. Is that doable?
I have to do it to you tomorrow.
Yep. And then who would actually sign it? The chair or are you delegated?
No.
Then different boards do it differently. You don't have to have a meeting to actually sign the document. You come in.
Right.
Okay. Sorry to put you.
No.
I'd hate to have.
It's been straight down to Friday so we can get it done.
I believe till noon time. I'm still nervous.
So I have, you won't be around.
Yeah, I'm not around on Fridays.
So if you get it done, if you get it made.
We just go off electronically with documents.
Yeah, I can email it to you.
Actually, you could email it to Sue and she could send back. Would that work?
Well, it will be easier for me. My expectation is not to draft a extended decision. I'm happy to do that and send it to you. I probably can't get it to you before noon tomorrow from other commitments I have tomorrow.
Whatever you can do would be great. I agree, it needn't be very extensive. We're just denying.
Right. We're denying the application as submitted.
You heard it, no, not extended.
No, no, I don't have the time to extend it.
Wonderful.
So what's the plan here? It's going to be done tomorrow? Are we going to come by tomorrow?
Well, no, I'll have to draft it, send it to Tom. He'll have to get it back to us and then, and then it'll have to be available for, well, now what's this signature? I mean, because we're, if we're scattered, we may not all be able to get here.
Wait a minute, Bob was on this case.
No, he was just appointed.
Bob was on the case of Deculus.
No, 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 we're not talking about Deculus.
Talking about the first one elsewhere.
We're talking about elsewhere.
Did I miss something?
So it has to do with the 100 days.
Oh, I get you.
So we got two days.
What, can, how does the board delegate signatory? Can the chair just sign it? Because Don can certainly sign it. He'll be around.
Well, you would, you could do that by vote. You're still in your meeting, so you can vote to delegate authority to sign.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the most efficient way to get it done.
Excuse me, I have a question for Mr. Mullin. It's 100 days for the Board of Appeals to come up with a decision. So why don't they have that 14-day leave?
It's just that there are different cases and offhand, I can't remember how they all come down about whether the, if you, whether you can file with the town clerk outside the 100 days, but within 14 days after the vote. And so I'd rather avoid litigation on that point. I don't want to shoot from the hip until you think it's okay. It would be much, much better if we could do something decent but quick and get it filed on Friday.
Well, that is a, you know, if I can get it to you, you could basically review and approve and then create. I don't need to see it again. You just need to come up with a draft and send it to Don. Don can produce it and sign it and get it to Sue.
And then I recommend that you have a vote now, generally authorizing the chair to sign, to sign opinions on behalf of the board.
Oh, fine.
I'll make the motion that we, that Don authorized the sign for us.
Why don't we say the chair?
The chair.
Yeah. Well, as Tom says, in general.
I made that motion for only a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Come on over.
Marion Way.
No, I know, I know.
So.
That's right. Okay, where are we going to do vote Marion Way?
Well, I don't think we have to. I agree with Dave.
I mean, we've been on this case for a long time. We're not getting the answers. I don't think there's proper representation here. I mean, I would make a motion to deny it.
Were there any documents submitted?
Nothing.
Well, you know, they have times to do everything and they haven't done anything. I would have done a few things if they shouldn't say anything. But I mean, nothing has.
I think if you received, you're missing one document or something like that.
Yeah, more than one. And it's a guessing game when he comes into what he's doing. He gave, drafted him a letter saying what he should do and what he should have in here and he gave it to three different people that have been here representing Marion Way and nothing has come about with it. I'd just make a motion to deny.
Well, we have to close the hearing first.
I can do that too. Maybe motion to close the hearing.
We have to choose to close the hearing in the absence of the evidence we wanted. And then once the hearing is closed, then we can choose what to do with the case.
All right, okay. Is that a motion, Tom? Seconding. Trying to cut this talking down.
I got you.
This is, this is a letter that was written to him. It is necessary for the following information to be supplied due to the major changes in the project. We have requested the information repeatedly from Mr. Deculus since June of 2018. Therefore, the zoning Board of Appeals have requested the following documentation be delivered to this office no later than 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 19th. Failure to comply with this request could result in a denial of your application. One, new application for the health, CC, ZBA, zoning board, planning board, fire department requested. Updated PNS reflecting the proposed 12 single-family structures. Waiver summary, be descriptive, be descriptive and show how the waivers reflect the pro forma and for the pro forma. Signed by Dave. And this is sent to Pete Tompkins, Bart Parnes, G. Hale, Mr. Deculus, and Mr. Crowe. It is sent to all parties in interest.
Well, plus I would make as appointment permission that, that the applicant agent, Mr. Deculus, was officially advised of this in our minutes from the January meeting.
So no.
At the December meeting.
And sent this letter.
And he was here at that meeting. He was aware of that date. So I have every reason to believe that he would have been aware of this meeting.
We agreed to, right in the meeting minutes, we agreed to give him until today. It says Wednesday, February 20th, right in here.
Right.
For our next hearing.
So I, you know, either they're not interested in it or they don't care.
Something must have changed or something.
Yeah. Something, something. Because he would have, he would have simply asked for another continuance.
So we vote on this a little bit? Okay.
Close it?
You made a motion to, yeah, Tom made a better one, but.
It's the same motion.
Right, go ahead.
No, I don't know. Well, I guess I move that we deny the application as, as submitted on the grounds that the applicant never fully supplied the board with adequate information to make a decision that would in any way allow us to conclude other than we've already concluded on the original application. And without that information, the board has no other option but to deny.
One question. Did he need another application when he changed?
We asked him to update the application to this.
Which he didn't do.
No.
Okay, I vote, I agree. I second. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we need to close the hearing?
We did close the hearing.
No.
There was no vote.
Make a motion to. Close the hearing. Close the hearing, oh, yeah. I just did.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other business to be closed, Lloyd? Camera's cut.
So we'll draft a decision to deny.